On Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, in the council chambers at Hidalgo, West Hollywood, and the city of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the tax agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Civil Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Public notice: The use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings by the city council. Members of the audience, we provide an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a fore and proof of notice of the meeting. Remotes will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please write your name on the list so we may call you in order. Please speak to the microphone located at the podium. State your name and address if you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present to the city secretary. State law judge prohibits the council from discussing or taking any answer to any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule topic for future discussion or infer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor or city council members can call a point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack any elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. Call this meeting to order will have it in location by delivery in Michael Walbert's.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings bestowed upon us in this city. We pray for our mayor, for our city manager, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true need of the people of Alpine, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and in their tasks. And finally, Lord, as you do, so shall we. Be with people in their longing, stay with them in their needing, go with them in their doing, struggle with them in their searching, rejoice with them in their loving. And so it is in your name, blessed one, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Anybody wish to come to the podium? Nobody? Okay. I have no presentations today, and we'll have the city man reports. I don't have a report. City attorney.
Mayor, council, with city manager, chairman, we've been in discussions with lawyers for Republic and for Naismith, and we're about to get some reports on landfill that we're going to share with them, and we're going to have that, we're going to set up some meetings with them, try to have some meaningful discussions on next steps to try to resolve the issues in landfill, which all those issues were cells that were used without, outside the scope of the permit, and just sort of fill up the top three or four feet of them. And so it affects the life of the landfill, so it affects the citizens of Alpine as far as affecting the economic life of the landfill, so we're working our way through that. The other thing is that municipal court continues to go well. We've got a great staff there, they've done an excellent job of keeping up with all the tickets, certainly have an uptick in citations with the new Stafford police department. Safety in Alpine is a trip. Any additions to that?
No, I think on the, you know, landfill piece, we're working back with the company that bought Naismith, which was the engineering firm that basically had certified that from borderline six back to the west had been fully utilized, and our concern was that it really only been utilized three of the 20 feet. So we've been working back with their lawyer responsible for that. So I anticipate, they said seven, 14 days, they should be able to get back to us. It's been a little problematic, I've been trying to get this one company out of Austin to come do the boring. We're challenged in the sense that boring with the oil and gas industry doing as well as it is, we don't seem to queue up in priority, but we're just continuing to nip away at it, and my sense is we'll get that done first half of this year.
Are we having to take any garbage to Odessa area?
No, we accumulate in the city about 16.3 to 16.4 units full solid waste tons a day. We're permitted at 20, and so it's incumbent upon TDS if they sell above that to take to the other landfills at their cost.
Thank you very much, sir.
What's been the attitude? So, you know, I understand in terms of Republic is the company who ran it, Naismith did the engineering work. What I thought I heard you say is Naismith got bought?
Naismith was also bought.
They were also bought, so the engineer worked for them.
Correct.
So they're in the, it sounds like they're in the data gathering mode to say what's their liability.
Yeah.
I presume as part of this discussion, you're all going to go back and see where the liability rests and what they have when they did the procurement.
It didn't take long for the lawyer for the new company that bought Naismith to say, what do y'all want from this? And my answer was, if we can prove liability, we want money.
There you go. Okay, good. So you're into the discussions?
We're into the discussions.
Oh, very good. Okay, that's all I want to know.
And I said, you know, whether there's liability or not, we're going to have a report for you. If you have that report, the map, and all, then we can all talk about the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
The interesting thing is when we reached out to both Republic and Naismith, we knew the dump and disposal was then bought by the public.
Yeah.
So they sent a couple operations guys down to meet with us and talk through it. Then they handed us over to their attorney. When Rod sent the letter to the operations VP at Naismith, he immediately sent it to the lawyer, and all we heard from was the lawyer.
Okay.
So our initial inclination was, there's probably something in that purchase agreement to some level of culpability or responsibility.
Of course.
You know, we've got the information, the images, the pictures, all sent over to their team, plus what Grant Jackson, who was their PGE of record, who stamped off on it, had stamped off on, and we anticipate getting a response from them. We're probably about to send the case.
So are some of them?
Yeah, when we, the new engineering firm where he is, you know, at least in there on, is Dennis, Dennis Hill is principal there, it's Hill Engineering LLC. They characterize, if you look at the map when he did his analysis, when we needed to go back to TCEQ to open up an additional couple cells, his analysis, he basically said that all of those cells in quadrant two, he can't certify that they were properly disposed of. And so he could only certify the new cell that had been excavated where we want it opened up, so, which is, which is a good thing. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the landfill for the general region, region and discussions of that.
This is going to take several months to go, you know, based on?
Thank you, sir. City manager.
City council, we have four spring uses.
Moving slowly.
Wow. So several of them are the same, so we've got to make sure that.
Godzilla, you have one, sir.
I got Hulu over here.
You got Hulu. Hulu, watch what?
City council. How about that?
Okay.
Wow. I didn't have any music this time, so we'll do that next.
New cowboy poetry guy. What an honor that is. Top. We also have a clicker, so as I was explaining to the mayor, if you want to get up, walk around the room, and give your presentation, we can do that as well. But really wanted to kick off with the meeting up in El Paso this last week with the SWAC, where we did talk about some of the landfill issues. You know, more importantly, the council governments, and I know the mayor has attended some of those meetings, what we look at with them is, especially on solid waste advisory, we've got to participate in these meetings to unlock the funds that we use, most specifically Adelina's team uses with some of our recycling and reuse initiatives. One of the bigger items at this particular meeting, they talked quite a bit about a new firm that's moving into El Paso, Woodbridge, they're kind of a reuse, when you think about Trex boards that go into outdoor patios, this is using, Woodbridge actually uses composition from chewed up tires. And so one of the bigger issues that we have, certainly from a society perspective, is that people are going through more and more tires, and, you know, in Alpine, we're challenged with people because they'll throw them in the dumpsters, and we're constantly fishing them out of landfill, and then working back with different entities, whether it's through a SWAC grant or through other entities, to get rid and move the tires out of town. Woodbridge actually works with Tres Pacentras, which has a facility all the way on the west end of, or the east end of El Paso. So if you go out Horizon or Montana Sky Boulevard, out past really Horizon City, and in that particular storage facility, permitted through TCEQ, they strip down the tires, grind them up, and sell them back into the reuse market. So Woodbridge would then be a company that would reuse some of that material in the fabrication of these products. The other thing that happens with a lot of these tire millings, as you call, they also go into many streets and roads and other things of that nature. And so, you know, as a community and as a country, I think we're getting wiser and wiser and wiser on how to use tires and things of that sort. So really kind of leads me into the next thought, you know, one of the pieces that we always think about is some of the grants that come out of the SWAC. This past year, they had put them on hold, they're still on hold right now, they've got their next board meeting with the riverine council of government this next month, but Adelina's got several projects that she's queued up, and once those grants become available, we'll charge forward with that. And then really the last topic, which I think was of greatest interest to us down here, was the conversation with the southern counties about landfill use. It really kicked off with Big Bend National Park. They gave a tonnage amount that's coming into the park that was equivalent to half the usage that we see in our landfill here in Alpine. So they're accumulating almost half the amount of trash that we do from a city of Alpine perspective, which I found to be quite interesting. You know, we've got 6,000 people that live in Alpine, so they're almost accumulating the equivalent to about 3,000 people. I certainly haven't studied the park numbers, but what's happening is they're having to move that trash to Presidio in order to meet landfill requirements. Alpine is not an option for them, so then they have to also transport some up to Odessa. You know, the greater question that comes up is, you know, right now, Odessa Midland area is booming, the tourism traffic is continuing to grow down here in our region, and we want to make sure we have a real comprehensive approach to waste management. It's going to require a collective approach. Now, here was the interesting part, Presidio uses Naismith, and swear that they're a great firm. So knowing the issues that we're having right now with Naismith, I did have to kind of intercede and say, well, if we're going to do a collective plan, you know, city of Alpine will vote for a different firm to use than Naismith. But I think the gist of it is really working, you know, between Marfa, Presidio, South Christian County, Alpine Marathon, on what trash disposal looks like in our area and how it grows. Certainly, you know, our work locally to gain back some of that airspace in our landfill is important, as we think about, you know, our lifespan of our landfill, somewhere between 40, 42 years, we get back this airspace, you know, do we stretch it out to 47, 48 years? And so certainly not a glamorous meeting by any means, but important for our attendance, and so just really wanted to share with you kind of the key parts of that. You know, moving forward, city county 911 dispatch update, we, Chief Martin, Judge Canno, Sheriff Dotson and I met back on January 8th, and we talked about that to last council. We're going to sit down and kind of map out what combining our two dispatches would look like. Right now, we have a two-station PSAP, and they have a two-station PSAP. Alpine has the host electronics, the county is really considered the remote off of our host. Generally speaking, it takes about six people to run dispatch, although we typically only have one seat active at a time in order to go through 168 hours in a week, you really need six, six people on staff. What does that mean to the taxpayer? Well, it means you've got two dispatches that are parking lot apart, you know, probably double the staff that's absolutely needed. And I think this is, this is a fundamental question that's come up all the time. So when I was at the end of this cogney, Marissa Continueta?
Continua.
Continua, sorry. She is also the cog representative who handles 911 for the region. So she and I sat down for a good hour and really mapped through what are the overarching guidelines in the combination of the PSAPs. So they're four, basically program policy statements for moves, adds, changes, inventory, interlocal agreements, closures and consolidation. The one that we really have to queue in on is that interlocal agreement, because if we do want to march forward with the combination of the PSAPs, we do have to look at, number one, where does it reside? What makes sense? So Marissa, she and I talked again today, she's pulling call volumes for us, so we know more calls coming to the county, more more calls coming to the city. And then based on that, pull together a good interlocal agreement, so that one entity basically is paying the other entity to provide those types of services. And so all of that certainly is spelled out within this program policy statement, as we pull that together, thought, we've brought Thornton about that as well, we'll pull together interlocal, does it make sense for the city and the county, then we progress forward. If you think about a dispatcher, you know, the dispatcher's going to make between 13 and a half and 15 and a half an hour, you add benefits on top of that, you know, each entity would stand to save about $100,000 a year in annual cost. And really what we think about is, you know, all of the programs that law enforcement's going through, and all the technology and all the developments, so how do we repurpose some of those dollars to go attack other initiatives instead of stranding them with running two dispatches when we really only have one? So that's ultimately the goal there. I did hear from Marissa late this afternoon, she did talk with the overarching state authority, CSAC, that provides oversight for all 911 in the state of Texas, and they are, you know, at face level, very agreeable to this. They don't see any major, we wouldn't extract any of the equipment from one location to the other, we would actually leave all the equipment intact. The nice thing is that if one station went down, or two stations went down at one location, you could walk across the parking lot to the other and still be answering calls within, you know, three to five minutes. We don't buy any of the equipment, that's all purchased at the state level through the cogs, so certainly whether we buy or don't buy the equipment, it becomes the cog's overarching authority. Now, one thing to know is that they're making some enhancements in preparation for next-gen 911, trying to get a little bit more clear on the over-the-top application for text to 911. So we do know that 80%, the stat is, 80% of all calls going in to dispatch are through mobile phones, and people more and more want to use texting. And when you think about remote areas where people like to hike and go outdoors and do things like that, the cell towers are less frequent, but a text takes very little bit of data, and so having that text is super important for, you know, obviously saves some lives. More to come on that, just wanted to keep you all updated.
She mentioned anything about the fiber optic going into APD's office?
So yes, they do not want to change any bit of the communication coming in and out, that's why they want to leave all the equipment intact. Our real goal with it is labor. You know, if we can redirect the cost of labor to other activities and not have to carry 12 people between the city and the county, you don't want to carry six in that capacity, then we certainly can look at other types of initiatives. Now, she, they would not, and they pay for the services through the cog to A.C.
I guess the reason I was asking, we met at APD before Chief Scott retired, and we did a little walkthrough, and they talked about it, you know, where it was going to come in and where the equipment was going to be mounted at. So that's one, and she didn't have an idea of when that's going to be completed?
She did not give a specific date on that. They, but they will not change their planning on any of that. All the existing PSAP equipment will stay intact.
Just, I guess to preface, and see if I get it clear in my mind, the cog or council governments, they actually pay for the equipment, and the city just employs the individuals to operate, retrain them as well.
Correct.
The two side locations and the rent and so forth, side locations, is that also paid by the cog or?
We encumber the cost of providing the facility.
Okay. The, it's interesting, very, very interesting. If we need to upgrade, then we submit requests to the cog, and they then review and, I guess, evaluate, and then grant us funding for additional equipment or whatnot?
So generally, what happens is at the state level, CSAC gets funding from our state tax dollars every year, and generally, PSAPs renew their equipment on a seven-year cycle. They'll do some type of software refresh usually at year three or year four. And so each cog is going back to CSAC every year, asking for more than their fair share of dollars, right? Because you always want to make sure you have the most up to date. And then they'll be looking at the age of each of the PSAPs, they'll also look at the trouble, tickets that they're having, and then make a determination each year which equipment they want to replace.
And you feel comfortable that we have the up-to-date equipment to operate effectively?
Yeah, we're fine there. The nice thing with Marissa at our cog is she's a 20-plus year vet, she's been focused on this for many, many years, and Contini there has been super helpful for this region. Moving forward, later in the week, headed out to Austin, the airport lighting project requires, because it's of substantive value, it's going to be a $920,000 project, it requires an onsite project kickoff. The previous project that we did as a city, the taxiway and the ramp repaving, that's been, we selected the engineering firm within the past five years. When they submitted the bid in 2016 on that, they also included an add-on as far as engineering for lighting, and so we are capable of continuing to use lock-term engineering without having to go back out and source a new engineering firm. This is important because the sourcing can be a three to five month process, and by continuing to be able to use, Lockner did a very nice job for us on the previous project, we then pull up our timelines a little bit on this particular project. New construction estimate originally was $900,000, they scaled that back to about $850,000. You know, timing, the question is, do we get the federal funding allocations next fiscal year or the year after? The challenge with us because of the lighting system, I know Council Stevens can probably speak to the difference between the basses and the paffies and all the different lighting components, but we are really on a, you know, I call it get parts off the gray market, you know, it's an end-of-life type system. And I was talking to Riley this weekend, you know, they're sourcing parts, bulbs, and, you know, from wherever they can get them, and there's very few other systems out there, so that may trigger the need to actually complete this project next fiscal year. From a city perspective, you know, we've got the 7,000 allocated this year, which is our 10% for the engineering, and then our additional will be the 85,000, which will probably come next fiscal year. Meeting in February, Megan's wanting to talk about kind of where we're at with all our fund reserves across each of the different accounts. You know, that then moved us into a second conversation, which is a state-funded type project. So with text aviation, you have money that's coming from the feds, we also have the state allocations, and what they're doing is they're going across the state right now and looking at specific runways that need a seal code on them to extend their life, no different than really what we're doing here with our city streets. And when they were out doing the ramp and taxiway project, they looked at runway 19 and said, hey, you know, this would be a great one to pull in for a seal code. So what they're really looking at doing is pulling in four or five different communities together, so they can get a company to bid on all four or five at once to lower the cost for every light. And so we'll fall into the bucket with Marfa and a couple of the other airports around there. And I think we're all on board, it's just a matter of the allocation of the state funding, whether it will happen next fiscal year or the year after. Estimating, you know, 550 to 600,000, I think we put 590 there as what's on the project plan, so that's, you know, 59,000 of it runs from us. But certainly another fantastic project. But certainly, another fantastic project for the airport there.
So from a timing standpoint, if the lighting order occurred this year, I know we allocated, I think it was $79,000 for the engineering work and the $70,000 to go do the taxiway, I mean, the 119. If 119 got pushed out a year, from a funding standpoint, that'd line up perfectly because you'd get the lights done this year and then do the resale of the runway the following year, and that all balances out because we're all signed up. And the challenge is lights, landing with no lights is tough.
Yes.
Yes.
Because it's two things. It's light bulbs go on across the whole runway, that's as opposed to one out here and there. So they're working the one out here and there. It's whenever, when you hit the toggle and it doesn't go on at all, that's the worry. Yeah, kind of important, yeah. Like driving your car without headlights.
Do you land it anyway?
Oh, I've done it once, yeah. I don't want to do it again.
One of the other pieces I just wanted to briefly talk with counsel about, and I shared with all of you some research that was being pulled together from the SBC, and it was a mountain of research. But, you know, really, when you kind of noodled into it, what we saw is that, you know, some of the basic, call it core baseline data relative to Alpine, very consistent with what we were looking at back in 2016. You know, everything from our demographics, our age of our population, income brackets and levels. You know, what we certainly do know, that cost of housing and the amount of people we have in our community on some sort of support level domain, basic subsistence in life, right? So we know those numbers are a little bit higher. That's been consistent, you know, in the research that's come out. You know, we also look at Alpine, and we say, hey, you know, education, healthcare, social services really comprise 40% of our jobs here in the community. And that certainly validates what we see as far as the importance of SOLRAAS. Public administration is another 11%. So, I mean, these are important numbers to know relative to, you know, how we baseline our community. There are other opportunities that were called out in this study. You know, we know we've got $26 million gap in motor vehicles, parts, and things like that. So when we think back a couple of years ago, when O'Reilly's came to market, we thought, gosh, we've got NAPA, we've got AutoZone. Well, this is probably something that they picked up on. You know, you've got a gap, and you think about it, there are a lot of handicrafty people in our community who, we don't have a dealership here that's doing servicing, so a lot of people are going to these auto parts stores and buying parts and repairing vehicles. Now, we had a negative $10.6 million grocery potential. So basically, what that means is between having two Porter's Stores in Bluewater, looking at the capacity of a community of 6,000 people, we've got more than enough grocery shopping. And so one of the questions that comes in a lot is, you know, is HEB ever going to come to Alpine, right? Well, if HEB looks at this number, they're going to say, ooh, you've got three places.
I just got a letter from...
Right.
He said, no, logistics aren't here.
Well, yeah, because, so grocery, if you look at businesses, it's a low-margin business to begin with, okay? They're making maybe 3% or 4%, that's probably what Porter's is. HEB's getting a higher return because it's a public company. And they look at that and says, hey, you've got more capacity than these. Why extend all of the infrastructure that takes logistics to get out here? It's not on their list. So Porter's is here because they've got an infrastructure that's lined up for their seven-hour stores. They've already got their routes in the direction, but HEB's not going to.
You know, negative potential on building supply and lawn care. You know, I, I know there was some discussion earlier, well, late last year, about, you know, potentially another sort of building or lumber supply store here in the community. I mean, certainly, these numbers don't justify that. I mean, you've got employees, so, you know, that piece there. There's a $6.3 million potential with gasoline stores. When we think about this one right over here on the corner that just closed on 11th and Holland, a lot of people were gassing up there. And so we know West Texas Gas, a few years back, created that new Valero on the east side of town, and they've done fantastic with their sales out there. There's also an $8 million potential with clothing and general merchandise.
Nine supermarkets is coming to Pecos. They're probably national chain.
Yeah, they got the volume. And they see the volume there. Here, it's just the data didn't necessarily support. So really, you know, kind of last item of interest was this $8 million potential with clothing and general merchandise. As we look at that, you know, I think we have to question, there's a certain amount of online shopping that gets satiated, but then there's also a certain human element that wants to go into a store and feel and touch something before they buy it. It's a matter of finding that right mix of clothing and merchandise. So, you know, a couple, you know, outputs really, you know, I think it's important that, you know, as we think about transportation, we think about where the community's going, it would be good to take a, you know, relook at the 2016 vision plan, look at those 13 deliverables there. What adjustments do we feel like we need to make as a city? If we have some type of workshop that we invite the community in, do it in the civic center, you know, I certainly would love to work with counsel on that. And certainly, I think that lays the groundwork for economic development plan. You know, SOLRAAS has got a new president that's going to come in, and that president's going to look at what's the strategic vision of SOLRAAS. And we know SOLRAAS is so important to Alpine, so how does that dovetail in with what we're doing? And of course, you know, I mentioned the vision plan, but affordable housing, Alpine continues to be something that we really have to think about, you know, from the governing body perspective, from the administration perspective, and how to make things so people can afford to live here and still have good quality of life. No charge forward, you know, I'm going to bring this up every week until the end of the Texas Community Challenge. We did fall to 13th place. I was super disappointed about that, not that I'm competitive or anything, but we were in 12th place two weeks ago. So we do want people to join. You know, more than anything, it's a fun thing, you know? You go out walking, you just put in some time, if you do some weightlifting or yoga, you enter that in, and you get points, and Megan, and he's got an activity coming up. Alina's pulling together a community trash pickup that will be able to gain some points within the community, so.
I noticed, Eric, if we signed up for the urban cities, we'd be in eighth place. So, I mean, point-wise, we're doing fine, it's just we get a lot of competition in our areas. So maybe we want to move into the big cities or the urban.
Height and visibility is important. I appreciate the work that is being done, so. With that being said, we have...
Eric, just out of curiosity, do you have any idea what the health industry is generating money-wise for the city? All the fireworks, the hospital?
It's down a lot.
Yeah, I, I don't want to give my jaded personal opinion on this. I think, I think we're in epidemic proportion with our help in this country. I think what we do, you know, we sit here and we can talk about it from a 30,000-foot level. What we're trying to do is create activities for people to go out and get their body moving, enjoy different facets of Alpine. But, you know, we certainly have to be aware of that. Diabetes is an issue. You know, just the general, you know, I was reading a stat that said by 2030, 80% of the population will be overweight or obese. And, you know, we've got to do our parts now to make a difference. So you can't just rely on people to get medicated or have a hospital or things of that nature, so. We're trying to do what we can from the city perspective.
She's on everything.
Alina, sorry.
She's rude.
It's true. It's coming out to you. And then you just pointed at Mike's computer.
So I think I have two reports in the agenda packet, and I think the first one is the recycling.
No.
It's the...
Yeah, you could jump to the second slide if you want, yeah.
So this is the first report in the agenda packet, and it's an update for the December 2019 numbers, the number of visitors, data graphs, and recycling totals. Do you have any questions?
You know, Alina, just from context for counsel, your staff, when they're out there, you know, I think we talked before that, you know, the city of Alpine is about 60% of the visitors we see, and about 40%
County.
Are county. Do they, are they seeing that trend change at all, or does that seem to be fairly consistent?
It's fairly consistent. I actually compile all the numbers since we started collecting data, and it's been 60, 40, and it's like a little bit off 39, 60, like that. So it's been consistent since we started.
Okay. And then one of the other things, because we talked about the SWAC earlier, and one of the things we used the SWAC for previously was that glass crusher that was out there. How's that holding up for you out there?
Well, actually, right now, we've been processing a lot more glass. Our breaker bars are kind of wearing down faster, so we were replacing them every six months, but last time we replaced them in October, and we probably are due for another replacement. So we, yeah, we're processing a lot more.
A lot more glass.
There's a lot of them on the holidays.
We fill up a roll-off in 40.
The good sign is people are recycling.
Yes.
What about electronics?
At this time, I don't have an electronics pickup. We're trying to see if we can have one for next year.
Okay. So just keep gathering at home.
Yes, we do have a new company in town. I suggest people, if they want to call them, they're the O.S.T. They take electronics, but I don't know, they take really old ones. They take newer flat screens and computers at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on the recycling?
When your attendants aren't busy, what are they doing? I mean, are they cleaning the trash around the surrounding area?
They do the street from the cemetery down
Excellent.
Down to the center, and they always have something to do, they always have either mulching or processing glass. But if not, they kind of keep the center in order and just help customize stuff.
Very good, thank you.
But when your plastics was down, is that going to be up again?
Yes, we're up again. They just, it took like a couple of days to switch it, but we're taking everything at this time. And then the next report in the agenda packet, it's a project we were working with local scientists from the Far West Texas Water Planning Group, SOLRAAS, and area scientists. And the project was to develop and submit water strategies for, for water conservation. With the assistance of LGV government associates, the city of Alpine submitted two strategy proposals on December 12th, and they were approved January 9th. And these strategies consist, the first strategy is developing or identifying locations for water catchments. So the area where the coconut park would be, would be delineated with software, mapping software, and they, we calculated how much water we would be able to collect at three points, and then we would use this water to either water coconut area, lodge, forest grow, and then eventually the water would reach the creek, and it would be, like, restore the creek, restore it to habitat for birds and wildlife, and increase the auto recreation in the area. The second strategy would be the reuse of the treated effluent from the city of Alpine Water Treatment Plant, and we would, at this time, we're collecting 400,000 gallons.
It's about 400,000.
And we're outputting 75, but if we modified our facilities and update the irrigation system at the coconut or golf course area, we would be able to output more and essentially stop depending on portable water that we use for the golf course or the parks. And then essentially, that water would reach the creek, and it would be used for the same thing to rehab or restore Alpine Creek to make it a more auto-recreation area for the city of Alpine.
Now, when you talk about the water reached at Alpine Creek, is there plans to create some dams or something to hold the water there?
Yes, at this time, it's really tentative. We just developed the cost strategies and a tentative plan to get the water, but once we have enough water, we would be, we were thinking of ponds and trails and working with other people to restore the creek with native plants and...
Because I had talked about that back in '15, you know, met with David Bucy. David Bucy has a detail that Army Corps of Engineers had engineered for that creek by the golf course.
Okay. Yes, we're also looking, I'm working with SOLRAAS professors and their students because there's also potential of groundwater recharge. So that would be something that we would work along them and monitor and see if the aquifer would recharge in that area. And I think the harvesters too, Dr. Harvesters, they would work, they would come into the project too. This is just tentative, it's not binding, we're not going to be helped to it, but it's like to hold a place in the plan so we can ask for funding in the future.
You might want to talk to him, because one of the deals was, a lot of, there's a lot of people spent money for bird watching.
One of the examples that came up is the BJ Bishop Wetlands area in Presidio. So I'm contacting them just to pick their brain and see how they got through that same. They did the same thing with the water treatment plan, so maybe I can give some information somewhere.
So, Alina, I'm a little curious, at my house, we collect 80,000 gallons a year. I mean, we harvest that already, and that's how we do all of our outside water irrigation. But when I, and we thought about it in terms of how to catch and how to use, and we buried tanks and all that stuff. But you've got the locations 1, 2, and 3 on the map in Figure 1, as catchment locations, those are not near the creek. And so I'm just trying to understand that why that is, because that says you got to go build storage facilities, or you got to dig them out, and I just familiar that area because it's up in the low 5.
I think what, what they're catching is the watershed where the neighbor food is coming, so they want to control it at that point.
But that's going to require either digging it out or putting an above-ground facility there. So I'm just, as you think about it, I'm not trying to dive into the details right now. I think you're willing to think about what the implementation is from a catchment containment and what the strategy is when you got the runoff, is ultimately, it is going to hit the creek. And so you want to think about, and back to what the mayor's talking about, I know David Bucy had a concept to be able to look at, could you take care of the water in the creek itself, create an overflow with your backfill there, and to get two values out of it. One, from an animal standpoint, the other is the perk capability to get back into the water table. So it'll be a, I know you got a lot of work to go do on this thing, but it's, it'll be an interesting thought. That's why I might be considering wanting to, where you're going to put those things. Because we know the water runs right now, and I presume as part of the study, you'll think about where that water actually flows, whether it's out of 1, 2, or 3, because eventually it does all break clean.
It does. Yes, and at this time, it is really preliminary, so we can add that stuff later, but this is kind of like what we submitted, just so we could be in the plan, but that's a really good suggestion. I'll be sure to look for Mr. Bucy's notes.
It was interesting how this... It was interesting how this manifested back in November. Because we talked to a couple of folks relative to the regional water plan that was due in December. And we had all about three weeks to pull something together. And we wanted to be part of the regional water plan in order to be eligible for the grant funding. And so certainly, we're in heavy input phase right now, so we appreciate all the inputs.
What's the best way to get some thoughts to you? How do you want us to, you know, whether it's someone who has interest or someone on council, what's the best way to get information? Do you send you an email, some thoughts?
Email would be great.
Great.
Or you can call, and I'm ready to take a call and notes and suggestions. And adding to even our email group and just say, this resident suggested certain themes.
And Adelina's pulling back our environmental services at the board that is here this evening. And so that group will be, yep, another great source.
We're having a meeting tomorrow, so hopefully we're done.
And you will appropriately then ask for who goes, who are going to have members appointed for that board?
Yes.
We know who you are.
We know where you're at. We have a lot of work to do.
Just to make a comment, it's interesting now, over on War Two, we actually put, I guess it's the start of the main creek that's down, when there was a rather dense thick of vegetation in the vicinity. You could see a lot of deer, havelin' up, using the creek area as a corridor. But since they cleared off quite a bit of the frubs and so forth, which I think is great. But it's interesting enough that they're migrating now out of the creek area before, just a little bit above, and they're coming right through basically which would be Avenue thirteen and twelve, I think. And they're just walking right to town. It's amazing to see large deer and havelina. I saw you live saw a fox.
And this plan is proposed for the coconut area, but it's also open to move along the creek, like depending on, if it's successful, it would be implemented in other places through the creek.
And what I'm trying to get at is, is there might be any interest or thought about doing a wildlife study as to how critters or natural critters from outside are coming into town to sort of maybe look at wildlife waters?
Well, I'm trying to reach Dr. Harvest, and maybe they would have students at NRM or with their conservation biology, that would be a good project if they wanted to.
You can probably get state funding out of that too, because the state already does funding for surveys across the state. It's out of Saul Ross and the State Wildlife Center and Cave Woodward flies. I mean, we find deer on our property, which is on the east side, out in the canyon area where they've passed, because the deer have been tagged, and they track them. And so to your point, I think it's a great idea to go figure out how we get some state funding to go track all those animals in terms of what's going on. They track the deer, but I think they track the deer, the pronghorn, and a couple others. But deer, fox, and all those? Yeah, the havelina, yeah, we have, my wife calls them, my little ones have havelinas. And they go through a ford. But they're spending out there.
Yeah, we have deer going down Sixteenth Street. My dog lets me know when they're there.
Any more questions?
Good report. Also, want to compliment the folks that work out there. I get a lot of people telling me, this man is so courteous or willing to help me, even though when you have the turnovers, it just continues. So I guess that's kudos to you for doing a great job in training.
They're really good kids.
Something about picking up trash?
Oh, it's a bookie pickup or? We're having bookie pickup, and it started yesterday, and it's going through all week. I have information on our Facebook page, but also you can call me and if you have any questions on what stuff to set out and...
And you were going to get together some people to pick up trash?
Oh, yeah, well, this is the community challenge event. I'm trying to do an event in February.
Can I email you about that?
Yes, yes, so I'm just going to have volunteers, and we would get points for the community challenge, but also clean different polygons, different cleanup days through the city.
I'll volunteer, I'll email you.
Yes, please.
So excuse me, how are we advertising that?
I haven't, the community challenge, I don't know if we're advertising it as a city.
Yeah, there are flyers there that we can use. We're not as heavily organized on this, but we're trying to just pull some things together. It's our first year doing it. Yeah, yeah, there's different activities that you can do. We've been brainstorming, and so I had the staff meeting today, and something that Adelina said, you know, let's do some additional trash pickups across the community just to see if we can get people out, even if we get a dozen people out.
Make them feel badly if they don't get out. Take your old bag like this, and just keep going, "Help!"
But we'll put it out on Facebook, and put it on our website, and then we'll also put it out with Martin. And we just, she just needs to pick some dates, and then we'll start around.
I've got a large TV that I want to, yeah, it's too heavy for me to even take it. I don't belong.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, as we want to public comments, we have none. Consent agenda, City Man Club.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items. The following items are routine and administrative nature. The council's been furnished with the background and support material on each of them, and where it's been discussed and agreed to be. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration and its normal sequence after the item, not requiring separate discussion, have been acted upon. Remaining items will be adopted by one vote. Item A is approval of minutes from City Council Leader on January 7, 2020. And item B is approval through the Advisory Board and Commission Application Question.
Okay. Yes, sir, approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a second.
Okay, there's a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion taken, and quizzed. And information discussion items, discussion items, we have none. And what we want to, item number nine, action items to be completed by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to ten per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp, citizens are required to state their name and the word of their say desire. Priority will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live or own businesses or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time to play. City Man.
Mr. Honorable Member of the Council, item one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on updating check signatures for all city of Alpine checking camps. That would adjust having myself, Sempia, and Chief Martin, and Scott Perry with the updates and staffing to develop, it's important to update this as well. Sempia and I are primary too, so we sign about ninety-five percent of checks. The only time we would go position three or four is if one of us is acting.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I move that Council approved Resolution 2020-01-04 that updates the check signatures for the city of Alpine for all accountants with the city manager, city secretary, chief, police, and emergency services.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, there's a second on that? I've got a quick question. Wasn't Captain Osoya also on signatures?
He was.
Okay, so we're moving him.
Yeah, he was replaced. And Randy Guzman was the building signature.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion taken.
Item number two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on a pending resolution for the city of Alpine to enter into an agreement with the Big Ben Parks and Recreation for Kids nonprofit organization to accept and install equipment at the city of Alpine parks that the Big Ben Parks and Recreation for Kids donates to the city of Alpine. In your packets, we, a couple of little minor changes that I highlighted.
Mr. Mayor, as the one who originally drafted Resolution 2019-06-02, I recommend Council approve the amendments as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, several seconds. And everybody's on the ball today. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion taken. Okay, item three.
I will answer, Council. Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on approving the notice of general election for the city of Alpine, May 2nd, 2020 election. City Secretary Sempia Solis.
Very cool, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, go free for free. I propose that we approve the notice of general election for the city of Alpine to take place on May 2nd, 2020 for the positions of mayor, one to councilperson, and one for councilperson.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, remember, like for these seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, thank you very much. Now we move on to City Council member comments and answers. I'm going to start with my left.
Got it.
You've got it.
Thank you very much. Hey, I just want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Adelina, are you still here? I'm really stuck on the take care of Thomas. I thought you did a great job tonight, so very pleased to pass that along to you, Adelina. Also, thanks for all the work that you're doing. You got lots going on, but it certainly is making our job as councilmen easier with all the things that you're up to and that makes us all the more so. Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming. I agree with Rick, you did a great job. I'm looking for some excellent from staff.
I want to thank everybody for coming.
Is it?
Also, thanks everybody for coming, and kudos to the staff, Eric and staff for setting up the screens up on the wall. It's certainly having too many. The only recommendation I made is when the lettering is a little bit small.
I should have flipped that last one or two slides.
See how tall he is, he cuts his hair.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all, and you all have a good evening. And again, I think you did a fantastic job at the recycle, and I got some folks here.
One comment back to you all, this is very, very well run.
Thank you very much.
And I love the comments at the end. That's something I've not seen before in a city council. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Be careful you don't kick your head off into those.
City Manager, you could tell, you have to compliment her staff, because I always get, you know, reports from folks here and there that they're always full of envy, curdies, and willing to help load this stuff that's got taken over there. So with that said...
Mr. Mayor, move your turn.
I have a second. Second, the man is unpronounceable.